Good evening. I'm going to call to order the Thursday, September 19th, regular monthly meeting of the Board of Trustees. Welcome, everybody. I hope everybody's having a great day and it's good to see everybody here tonight. First item is the invocation and pledge of allegiance, and I will turn that over to Vice Chair Castles.
Good to see you Eagles here tonight. Thank you for being with us. We have with us Abby Rowley, and she will be giving the invocation, but I'm going to share a little bit about her first. She's a senior at Airport High School with a GPA of 5.288 and is ranked fifth in her class. She's a part of the Student Council at Airport High School and is currently the Student Body President. She previously served on the Executive Board of the Student Council as Student Body Historian. Abby's recognized as an AP Scholar and is part of the Early College Program through Midlands Technical College, where she received her General College Study Certificate. She'll receive her Associates of Art and her Associates Associate, excuse me, of Science this May. She's also a part of the Airport High School Marching Band and Concert Band. She's in the National Honor Society, PTK Honor Society, the Beta Club. She was a Junior Marshall during graduation this past spring. She had two of her essays published in the school newspaper, The Erie. Outside of school, she volunteers at Palmetto Lifeline and is involved with the Shannon Baptist Youth Group, where she completed two mission trips. She attended Palmetto Girl State during the summer, and after graduation, she plans to pursue her Bachelor's Degree in Political Science and then attend law school. And then, giving the pledge, will be Mr. Andy Roldan Garcia. He's a senior at Airport High School with a GPA of 3.779, and he's the current Senior Class President. He also served as a Vice President his junior year. He's a member of the National Honor Society, and Andy played basketball during his ninth and 10th grade years and plans on playing his senior years. He sings in the Airport Chorus and is a member of the Airport All-Region Choir and Lexington District Two Choir. He aspires to play basketball at the next level while majoring in Accounting and earning a minor in Business Law. Ms. Abby, go ahead.
Thank you. Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for your love, your grace, and your mercy. Thank you for allowing us to assemble in this environment. Thank you for the various leaders who are the true champions that empower our students and this community. We ask that you would bless this meeting with your divine wisdom and guidance, and we, as a district, pray you will continue to give us the strength to do whatever it takes to better this community. We pray that you will give our teachers the resolve and patience to care for, educate, and love our students. We ask that you would protect our district from harm and will continue to bless our teachers, faculty, and students. God, we again thank you for who you are and what you have done for this community. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you so much. Next item is Consent Agenda. And if there's no objection, and that is for the approval of the agenda and the minutes from the August 15th, 2024 regular monthly board meeting, and if there's no objection, the Consent Agenda will stand approved as submitted. Next item on the agenda is Honors and Accomplishments of Students and Staff, and I will now turn that over to Dr. Hefner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For tonight's honors and accomplishments, I'd like to first invite Brooklyn Casey High School Assistant Principal, Ryan Van Omen, up to the podium to talk about some Brooklyn Casey students who've received a prestigious college board recognition. Mr. Van Omen.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Hefner, and members of the board. It is my honor to be here with you all tonight to recognize these amazing Brooklyn Casey High School students here with me. The College Board National Recognition Programs awards academic honors to high-performing, underrepresented students. The five national recognition programs include the National African-American Recognition Program, the National First Generation Recognition Program, the National Hispanic Recognition Program, the National Indigenous Recognition Program, and the National Rural and Small Town Recognition Program. Recipients are strong academic performers. Students who take eligible administrations of the PSAT, the PSAT 10, or AP exams and meet the school requirements are considered for awards. Many colleges intentionally recruit awardees, and school communities often celebrate students who receive these awards. Our students are recognized for being first-generation prospective college students. I have two students who are physically here with me tonight, and then a few more students I'll read about in a moment, but I'm going to allow these wonderful people to introduce themselves. Up first, we have Ms. Kayla Izell.
Hello, I'm Kayla Izell. I plan to go to USC once I graduate and get a four-year degree in Environmental Science and pursue a doctorate's degree for pathology.
Up next is Mr. Kaden Morse.
Good evening. I am planning on attending USC to get my bachelor's degree in either aerospace or mechanical engineering and a minor in Christian Studies. Thank you.
The following students cannot be here tonight due to athletic commitments. Emma Henry. Emma plans to attend Clemson University and major in biology. She hopes to become a pharmacist. Katherine Silva. Katie plans to attend Clemson University and major in chemistry and minor in criminal justice to become a forensic scientist. Lastly, we have one student who was accepted into the Governor's School for Arts and Humanities last school year, but he also received this accomplishment while he was a student with us. That is Mr. Jason Mickelson. I also would like to give you an update on some students that were honored through this program last school year. We have four students that received these awards last school year, and they are currently enrolled. Hope Riley is at the University of Pennsylvania. Freddie Asbury is at Winthrop University. Cameron Boyd is at the University of South Carolina. And Nakiriana Mays is at the University of South Carolina Honors College. We look forward to similar achievements from this group of students, and we are super proud of their accomplishments. Thank you all.
Next up, we have Mr. Casey Cuthill, West Columbia Branch Manager at Palmetto Citizens Federal Credit Union, who's going to tell us about a Northside Middle School teacher who won a special recognition that included a shout-out in front of nearly 80,000 football fans at the USC game. Good to see you, Mr. Cuthill.
Good to see you too. Good evening, Dr. Hefner, Madam Chair, and fellow board members. We're excited to recognize Arlene Neely, as honored by Palmetto Citizens, the teacher of the game this past Saturday. Her journey to teaching was inspired by a high school teacher who helped her feel safe and capable and motivate her to help others in that same way. Despite leaving college early to help her growing family, she returned to college to complete her degree at the University of South Carolina and followed her pursuit of dream of teaching. Now, three years into teaching experience, Ms. Neely is passionate of empowering her students to create an inclusive environment and hoping them realize her potential. Her dedication and love for teaching have earned her this well-deserved honor. Congratulations.
And you're welcome to make remarks if you like. All right, we'll stay on Northside Middle School for a minute, with Principal Dr. Tiffany Hall coming to the podium to talk about a huge grant that the school has received and how they'll be spending that money to support their students. Dr. Hall.
Good evening, Dr. Hefner, Madam Chair, and board members. So, Northside Middle School is proud to announce that we've been awarded $110,000 from the Stronger Connections Grant to support our comprehensive plan to address a couple of key challenges within our school. Those are related to chronic absenteeism and behavioral incidents. So, last year alone, we reduced behavioral referrals by 100, which is quite a challenge in itself, but we would like to continue to do that. And so, this grant will help us to target strategies that'll focus on character education, academic improvement, and building a positive school culture. So, some of those initiatives that this will help pay for are Leader in Me, which will help us to build a common language around behavioral expectations with our students, which include the Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. And so, we want to promote leadership skills, character development, and career readiness among our diverse population. So, this funding will make a significant impact on our student outcomes in addressing the unique needs of our school. So, we would just like to thank you all and Dr. Hefner for your support in being able to apply for this grant. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, you may recall that our next honoree was here last month to be recognized for academic certifications that she received over the summer, and this month, she's being recognized as one of only 10 educators in the nation to have been selected for a prestigious gifted and talented education opportunity. Mr. Masson.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Hefner. Tonight, I'm very proud to introduce and recognize Ms. Hannah Pond, an ELA teacher at Busby, for being named a 2024 Javits-Frazier Scholar. Because students from low-income and minority populations are historically underrepresented in gifted education, the Javits-Frazier Scholars Program was created to recognize passionate, innovative educators who serve culturally and linguistically diverse students. Dr. Hefner stole my thunder here, but, which is your right, but Ms. Pond is one of only, one of only 10 educators nationwide to be recognized as a Javits-Frazier Scholar. Ms. Pond is in her third year teaching at Busby and her first in the ELA department, but already has shown courage and ambition by helping to raise the profile of our minority students in her English I high-school-level classes. Ms. Pond will travel to the West Coast later this fall, where she will participate in professional development that she will then bring back to Busby. We're very proud of her and her accomplishments, and at this time, I will turn it over to her to tell you a little bit more about being named a Javits-Frazier Scholar.
Thank you, everyone. I certainly would not be able to do anything without many people in this room. I'm very grateful and blessed that I have this opportunity. I'm going to get to go to Seattle, which will be the furthest away from home I've ever been, for about a week, and it will be a really great learning experience, and I hope to bring back a lot of good information to Lex Two, to Busby, just to make sure that we're serving our students in the best way that we can. Also, I'm wearing the same shirt that I'm wearing in the picture that's been floating around on social media, and I didn't realize that until I was standing up here, so that was not on purpose. I just need to clarify. But thank you so much, everyone. I'm really excited to come back. I hope to play, I'm so sorry. I hope to present at conferences with some of the information that I'm bringing back, especially as we see more multilingual learners moving into not only our state, but our country, and to make sure that we're serving those gifted children as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you all. Next item on the agenda is public participation, and we have one participant, and I will call them to the microphone. It is Dawn Pierce, who will be speaking on the Agenda Item Instruction.
Hey, good evening, everybody, Madam Chair, Dr. Hefner. My name is Dawn Pierce. I'm a parent, but I'm also with Moms for Liberty. I'm the Chapter Chair at Lexington. I wanted to first start off by thanking you all for taking over 400 pocket constitutions. National Constitution Day was on Tuesday, the 17th. We partner with the 917 Society, and so, we're grateful that you've taken these. If you need any more, please let us know. This is a great way for our eighth graders and other students to be able to learn about history and their rights, so I wanted to thank you on that. Also, I wanted to mention about, I, we have donated Glenn Beck's new book, Chasing Embers, and I hope you've had a chance to read it. If not, we have another copy. If a parent wants it or a board member, I'd be happy to give that to you. Also, I wanted to let you know that Rush Limbaugh Society has donated over 50 books. If this is something that you're interested in, I also want to be able to share that with the district. You're welcome to have this copy and look through that. A couple of complaints that aren't really two complaints, but parents have come to me and asked that if they have a child that is on the bus for sports, is it possible that we can supply them with a hotspot in order to be able to do their homework? Because some of the trips are two hours out and two hours back. I know we were able to do that during COVID. I'm asking for these parents because I think it's a great way. Some of these kids have fallen asleep trying to do their homework after being at an event, so that is something I just wanted to mention for consideration. The other issue that was mentioned to me is that we have a lot of Hispanic children in the district, and we don't have enough people that, teachers that speak Spanish in order to accommodate these children. So, I don't know if there's a way that we can actually improve on that because it's taking instruction time from our teachers, and it's not good for anybody. So, that's something I just wanted to mention, if there's any way that we can handle that to help our kids a little bit more. And the last thing I just wanted to mention is, over the summer, I did a couple of events, and I thought it would be great for back-to-school events to put together a little bag with, inside the bag is hygiene products such as travel deodorant, toothpaste, lip balm, hygiene, and pads, tampons, all kinds of stuff like that. So, I did drop some off at the school districts for some of these kids because we do know that these items are expensive, and we know that kids need these things, and they're not aware. So, if that's something that you need, I would really appreciate it if you reach out to me, and I'll get those to you. Also, if you would like to donate any of these items, so this way we can keep on doing this, I'd really appreciate that. So, that's all I have for today, and I just wanted to say thank you for everything, and if you need anything, please reach out.
Thank you. All right, next item is Administrative Divisional Reports, and we'll start with Superintendent, and I'll turn that over to Dr. Hefner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Many of you were here before the board meeting started, and you know that we had this amazing Hall of Fame ceremony with our first six inductees. And as we continue to focus on growing our arts program so that we have many amazing candidates for future Hall of Fame recognition, we held the Lexington Two Gifted and Talented Dance Auditions here in the Performing Arts Center at the end of August, as well as the district musical auditions at the beginning of the month. And coming up at the end of next week, we're so excited, the Columbia Children's Theater is putting on The Frog and the Toad, which will be free for all of our first and second-grade students, so that will be fun. We've partnered with them. We also have our Hispanic Heritage Month Celebration, which will be throughout the PAC facility on October 1st. We have a multitude of school student performances, excuse me, student performances throughout the months of October, November, and December to include a joint production between BC Airport and the Columbia Children's Theater Performance. They're doing Pippin, so that should be fun. And there are a number of meetings in the venue space, ranging from all-state chorus auditions to professional development opportunities for our teachers and community partnerships. I'm very excited to share with you that the Army Band is doing a free concert here on November 10th in honor of Veterans Day. They feel like the Sunday would be better than doing that on Monday, when we actually observe Veterans Day, so please come out for that. And as we end the, near the end of November, we'll start to see performances like The Nutcracker by different venues such as the South Carolina Christian Dance and the Lexington Youth Ballet. In addition, during that time, we are hosting several school winter concerts and assemblies prior to the winter break. So, it will be busy with all the rehearsals and setups. Again, Mr. LeBlanc and Josh and Laura, they do a great job working with all these people and getting this set up, but it's well worth it. And in addition, another exciting point is that we have a student internship with the PAC in technical theater. And the program is in its infancy, but both high-school theater classes will be making a field trip over, so that's a new venture for us and should be very exciting. We expect to grow that program. I would encourage you, we are in the process of launching the new website for the Performing Arts Center, so that you will be able to see all the events that'll be open to the public and free, or if there's a cost or tickets or anything like that. So, please take a look at that through our Lexington Two website. One of the things that we've been working on in the district is focusing on growing our own. And if you can barely see, there's a Leadership Development and Support System graph up on the monitors. And we're really, we said, you know, let's, we're doing some good things. We want to make a list of what we've done, where we want to go. We know we've had some work with our assistant principals and cohorts. We want to focus more on leadership development with them. We have professional development with our principals all the time, if they aspire to move up the leadership chain. But two that we're focusing on this spring is going to be, and I got to say this right, teacher leaders and leader, leaders of teachers. And so, we are taking applications. Laura, if you'll switch to that next flyer, please. We're going to be taking applications for Lex Two Grows. That's the name of the program, and that will be all-encompassing of the programs as we develop them. But Lex Two Grows is an application process for our teachers who want to become leaders, and they can become leaders as in leaders of other teachers, like instructional coaching, or a teacher leader where they're leading in their own capacity in the classroom, maybe as a department chair or something of that nature. So, we will have a rubric and a committee and all of those things to score the applications. And in the spring through the May, that will be more of a general leadership development class. We've already kind of mapped out the, the agenda and the things that we want to cover, but that will be inclusive of everybody. And then, at the end of May, those folks would then decide whether they want to be a teacher leader or a leader of teachers. And then, in the fall, we're going to split those two groups and focus very specifically on that type of leadership. So, be on the lookout, teachers, if you're interested in leadership opportunity. We're very excited about this. We're very excited about getting the framework together and solidifying everything. So, that's good news. And then, lastly, I know everyone's aware the State Board of Education has released a model policy in regard to cellphone usage in South Carolina schools. And what we know for sure is that cellphones cannot be out during the instructional day, which has been defined as morning bell to afternoon bell. What is yet to be determined is how we will enforce that process. We've had discussions with school leadership. We are in the process of sending out a survey to parents, students, and staff, so please be on the lookout for that. Please fill it out. We want your feedback. We look to bring back a draft to you all next month, and we will continue to send out information to families and encourage parents to have conversations with their students regarding the importance of focusing on their learning and keeping the cellphones out of the picture, put away. So, Madam Chair, that concludes my presentation. If there's anything you have questions about, I'd be happy to entertain them. Any questions, Ms. Rocker?
Thank you so much. Yes, I just wanted to mention about the math testing. So, we have, we have already completed some of that for the first part of the year,
Yes, ma'am.
and we'll be doing that three times in a school year. Okay, so, I didn't know if maybe next month we could get an update on what we're seeing from the first round, how we're going to use that information to, to see how we're doing with our growth and, and that kind of thing. The best I can tell is it doesn't tell you the, you know, the reading level of your child, but, you know, it does give you some, some good and helpful information. So, I just want to see like how we can use that.
The scores will place the child in a RIT band that's specific to their level of reading. So, there's, there's a Lexile range that gives us a comparison to where, where we need to teach them.
And parents are given those scores?
They will be.
Okay, and explain how it works and everything?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you're good. I can't wait to hear more about that, and thank you for all your updates.
Absolutely.
Madam Chair, when will, when will parents get those map scores? What's the plan?
Dr. McDonald, we're running those reports.
So, we're concluding testing. So, right now, schools are still doing a final makeup test. So, I think we're aiming for probably the end of next week, we'd be able to start sending out those score reports with an explanation letter. It's also going to come with a handout to kind of explain what that information means.
The only other thing I have is, I've never seen it, but I have two children. And I think when they finish, they can see a numeric score. And I think that might crush the spirit of some kids when they look over and say, hey, I got, I got a 220. What did you get? I got a 105, and now I'm crying. So, I, maybe that's just at the elementary level. But if there's a way, since now this is all done digitally, that that score cannot, that numeric score, because they, if it's just a range, fine. But if I say, hey, I got a 222, ha, 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 I'm proud of it. And then, Ms. Rocker is sitting there looking at her 105, that's not going to instill a love of learning, so.
I appreciate that, and I will share with you that one of the things that math testing focuses on is goal-setting with the students. And so, part of that immediate feedback is, did I reach my goal? Do I know what my aspirations are, and how am I doing to get there? Now, the excellent teachers in the classroom, we're going to hope, can help soften some of that. When they look at the score and say, okay, so where, where are our gaps? What do you, what do we need to work on? Let's sit down and map out a plan, map out a plan for you to try to narrow those learning gaps. But I, I understand what you're saying.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Hefner. All right, next, we will move on to finance, and I'll turn that over to Ms. Strickland.
Good evening to everyone. Tonight, I have the August 31st financial reports, and you'll see that the revenue and expenses, I have presented those on one page. So, I've consolidated the two reports. Same information, it's just on one page. Our budget for local sources, $49,000, $47,572.87. As of August 31st, we have received $1,045,953.96. That's 2% of our budget. State sources, our budget, $61,349,748.29. As of August 31st, we have received $6,943,479.84. That's 11% of our budget. So, our total revenue and transfers from, it's $124,128,542.16. Total received as of August 31st, $7,989,433.80. That's 6% of our revenue and transfers from budget. So, Ms. Rocker, you will see that I have moved the fund balance. You see, I've moved that down because it's really not revenue, so I wanted to make that correction. The expense budget, the total budget's $124,128,542.16. As of August 31st, we have expended $11,447,407.30. That's 9% of our budget. Next, I have the pupil activity fund balances. You will see from July 31st to August 30th, there was an increase of $51,335, and you see the rationale there. The ESSAR report, reminding you that these funds do end September 30th, 2024, which is the end of this month. As of August 31st, we have expended $18,478,207.42. So, the remaining we have as of August 31st is $854,420. That's 80%. I just, I want to tell you that we do have the remainder of that encumbered, which means we have issued purchase orders for that, so we do have that. We are, we are planning on getting all of that spent by the deadline. But this will be the last report for the ESSAR that I do. That's all I have tonight.
Any questions?
Madam Chair, when you say all of that, you're talking about the 854K is, is now shifted into encumbered?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Strickland.
You're welcome.
Next, we will move on to Human Resources, and I'll turn that over to Dr. Cooper.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Dr. Hefner, members of the school board. We're going to call up our Director of Human Resources, Stephanie Hux, who will go over our staffing report at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, Dr. Hefner, good evening. I'm delighted to say that at this time, we have four special education vacancies, three support staff vacancies, and one regular ed teacher vacancy at this time.
Are there any questions?
Any questions? Ms. Brannan?
I need to learn this before next meeting.
You're good. You're good.
All right. First of all, this is outstanding. As y'all know, Ms. Kessler and I have been around many a years, and I don't think we've ever seen a vacancy report this wonderful.
At least in several years.
And I know that's a lot due to your efforts and your efforts in your department, but that's also due to Ms. Strickland, with your budget you gave us and your recommendations on that, and Dr. Hefner, which y'all supported. And I also liked, because we don't get much praise, we, people like to beat us up. But this board worked really, really hard to take care of all of our teachers this year. And I think that message got, did get sent. And I do think that it helped with recruiting and it helped with retention. So thank y'all so much for your hard work. And thank you to this board for passing a good budget.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hux.
Which regular ed is not fielded?
Middle school math at New Bridge Academy.
All right. Any other questions? Ms. Castles?
I would also like to thank our administrators, too, because teachers stay when they are happy with their administrators and they are treated well. So appreciate you guys, too.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Hux.
Thank you.
Anything? That's all that I have.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next, we're going to move to instruction, and I'll turn that over to Dr. McDonald.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. We have a couple of things to share with you tonight. First up, an update for you from your August 1 board meeting. As y'all know, you approved two waiver requests that were submitted to the State Department of Education. One, to allow us to do some flexible things with filling these vacant positions and absorbing some other classes, and also making sure that we're fully compliant with class size. I'm happy to tell you that that waiver was approved by the State Board, so we can check that one. Our second one actually surprised us a little more. We presented a rather ambitious plan to allow the credit through examination program. And the State Department, after some back and forth, has approved that waiver as well. So that will give us yet another avenue to help our students get the credit that they need to be graduates. So the next step for us will be to begin to put these exams together. So our team will begin looking at what are those courses that are the most immediate need, and also identifying some clear paths for purchasing assessments, or really providing a strong assessment. The State Department actually shared with us that they were kind of excited for this. They had denied multiple requests similar to ours, but approved ours. So we're going to take that and run with it. And we're going to work closely with them on some logistical pieces now, in the coming weeks, to be able to provide that and offer that service to our students. So that will help those students who want to accelerate their pathway. At the same time, it helps those students who may be behind. So it gives us another avenue to really do some great work. So just wanted to update you on that. And of course, once we get to the point where we're offering those examinations, we will bring that back to you at your request to share updates and progress. So just wanted to start with that tonight. Next up, we want to share a great innovative practice that ties along to Dr. Hefner's information about our pipeline and our pathway development. And tonight, we have representatives from Casey Elementary and from Brooklyn Casey High School to share with you a program that we're calling L2 Full Circle, which builds some mentoring capacity within our schools, utilizing our high school students to help mentor our elementary school students. So Ms. Lundey, I think, is going to tee this one up for us. Very good. Wonderful. Thank y'all for being here.
Madam Chair, Dr. Hefner, members of the board, thank you for letting us come tonight and talk to you. And really, what you're going to see is how one email turns into this great program. We, I got an email from Mr. Spigner?
Spigner, yeah.
Yes. I couldn't remember who sent it. Hold on. There we go. Got an email from Mr. Spigner. It says, hey, last year with Mr. Drauzdak, we had these BC students come over. And I'm sitting at Casey thinking, I want, there's more to recess than what we have right here. There is more learning opportunities during that recess time for us to capitalize on. So I was like, great, come over. I have an idea. I have a rubric. I want to make recess better. Do you want to talk any about the background part with your piece?
So coming from the student leadership component, obviously, that was something that I was giving up and passing the torch to Mr. Spigner. We had started the Recession Buddies with Mr. Drauzdak the year before. But we also wanted something that was a little more structured from the BC side. But we also were looking for opportunities for our student leadership kids to interact with our elementary students. So that was kind of the background for our component.
And then all of us have heard many, many times that we're trying to increase our opportunities for work-based learning, not only at the high school level, but also with our elementary and middle school students, too. So we have a conversation and we start talking. And as we are rolling with our ideas, this is turning into this amazing thing. And then we wanted to name it something with Lex 2 in it. And I was like, pump the brakes. We're going to have to talk to Cabinet so that we can name it after Lex 2. And, oops, sorry.
That was good. That was the name.
Yes. So at Casey Elementary, this school year, we are targeting 4th graders during recess time. That matches up with the time that the BC High School students can come over so that they're not missing any instructional time. And then on early release days, we are capitalizing 1st through 5th graders to work with our mentors. And then, not only are they going to come over and learn how to be mentors, but we're actually going to provide professional development, and you will see one soon, but professional development for our BC High School students coming over so that they understand how to be a mentor. They understand that if any difficult conversations come up, they know how to handle that and to immediately report. And we have many people that are providing that PD. Myself, Mr. Spigner, Mr. Van Omen, when he can come over, Ms. Grace, the school counselor at BC, Ms. Treble, one of our APs at Casey. And we also included Dr. Tia Anderson, who's a USC professor. She also does the mentoring program at New Bridge Academy. So there's an MOA between New Bridge Academy and USC for that mentoring program.
All right. So during my student leadership class, which is our sixth period, I wanted to provide our students this opportunity for mentorship. So on Wednesdays, they travel over to Casey during that recess time in order to participate into this program. We also are going to utilize our teacher cadets. Teacher cadet doesn't start until actually the second semester, but we are going ahead and including them in our PDs during the early release Wednesdays, so that they can be prepared once they do that part of their service in the winter.
So with recess, I started looking at a rubric. There is a rubric. I did not make it, but it is great. It's from Playworks. And it really tells you what you should see during recess to eliminate bullying or picking, if it doesn't get to the level of bullying, making sure that everyone's included, and we don't have, you know, students standing out in the corner with no one to play with. So we talked with our BC students about this rubric and prepared them to be on the playground. And that's as far as we've gone right now. They've been on the playground first. They took the rubric and just observed. And all of the teacher pieces of the rubric, we took out. We said, we don't want to watch them teachers. We want you to watch for safety. Like, what do you see that we see every day? And so we just kind of walked past it. But you see it and says, no, it doesn't meet the safety requirements that we want to meet. And also, students, what are you noticing about our students at recess? Also, they're coming some mornings to open doors for us, too. So they're seeing the same faces throughout.
So our what-for BC was that we wanted to provide an opportunity for our kids beyond just going, and the boys that like to play basketball, play with the kids that are playing basketball, or the girls that are sitting around and talking, and the girls go over and sit and talk with them. We wanted to build a framework that allowed our kids to go and find the kids, seek out the kids that may not be playing basketball, or may not be sitting with friends, but helping to identify kids that need a friend, or need a mentor, and need someone that can have some support. And we wanted to provide opportunities for our kids to have some skills to do that. Beyond that, we obviously like serving Lexington 2, and we wanted to make sure that we were visible beyond Brooklyn Casey High School. So this was our way to do that.
All right. And we've talked about the where. It will be at Casey Elementary. But at the end, we will go back to BC High School. We'll take all of the kids that had mentors, and they will go to BC High School to visit and see BC, because the majority of our students at Casey feed into Busby and then BC High School. All right. So these are our PD sessions on the early release days. The first one that we did is just creating excitement around mentorship. And boy, can you learn a lot from teenagers. So we had them, we let them fill out, like, how did it go? What do you like? What do you not like? They said, stop making us sit and get us with the kids. So we took that feedback. And the next one is Leader in Me. Casey is a Leader in Me school. So we're talking about, just for about an hour, we're going to talk about the habits. We've got some very engaging and movement activities for the high school students. And then they're actually going to get to meet their, their mentee that they're working with. Any of the students that are coming every week, like during recess and on these early release days, those high school students have two Casey students. So there's never just one, and, you know, one high school student, one elementary student. And then the other one, we stay in a large group during the early release days. So plenty of adults around there. The next one, we are talking about hazing and bullying. Bullying, we hear that word a lot in elementary school, and really understanding what that means, because it doesn't always mean what the definition that the student or the parent has. And so really, for our students to understand what that means, and what it looks like, and how do we put things in place to prevent it. And if you want to talk about, Ms. Hip?
So Ms. Cindy Hips, she speaks yearly at the Boy State Convention. And we have several of our BC students who go to Boy State every year. Two years ago, one of our students was super touched by what she presented. So we asked her to come to BC and present for our kids that were college-bound, just talking about the dangers of hazing and bullying. I've reached back out to her. She's going to gear the conversation a little bit more towards bullying. And when we're doing this PD with our high school kids, you know, it's not only a reality that they're going to be working with our elementary kids, they're also getting ready to go off to college and experience new things themselves. So it's going to be a two-fold professional development in that they're going to learn how to talk about bullying with elementary students, but they're also going to learn some realities of what they might face in college, and some tools to hopefully prevent that.
And then on the next early release is one of my favorite activities. It came from Dr. Hefner. She did it with principals and leaders in the building, I think. It's 16 personalities. If you guys have never done it, you should do it as a board. It's so fun. It teaches you about your strengths and weaknesses, and how your weaknesses, someone else's strengths may, you know, counteract your weaknesses. And that's why we need a team to work together. So that's going to be super interesting with high school teenagers. And then we're going to have leaders in the community come in, and we'll have a panel for them to ask questions. And then the BC field trip. We talked about that. Good? Okay. All right. So let's get to the why. This is when it gets deep, and everybody should be excited, especially Dr. Cooper and Ms. Hux. We're helping you guys. We're helping you. All right. So first of all, teenagers are cooler than adults. Okay? They have more cred than we do. So our little kids are going to listen to those teenagers because they're cool, they're athletes, they're in the chorus, all that, you know, they're going to listen to them. What we want them to know is that school is important. We want them to understand inclusion and unity. We don't want to leave anyone out. And we're planting the seed to grow future Lex 2 educators. So we are doing a lot of talking about, what does it mean to be a teacher? We are asking them hard questions. Sorry, I'm kind of getting into BC students. If you want to come up here. We're asking them hard questions about, what is it about teaching? Like, what scares you about teaching? And they said, teaching's hard. And so we're talking through, like, why is teaching hard? What do you hear? And we are debunking and talking about our passion and why we're educators, why we need educators. And we are trying to teach them about Lex 2. We're going into some of the hows and the whys in Lex 2, so that when they want to become a teacher, and they're standing with two choices, another district or Lexington 2, they say, we already know about Lexington 2. Want to talk about more about BC?
So that theme of Grow Our Own has kind of come to fruition a lot recently, as a product of Grow Our Own, Lexington 2 Leader Now. We all know the, the strength that we have in this community and in this district. And our kids feel it, and they know what it means to be a Lex 2 graduate. But we want them to take that a step further, and not just be a Lex 2 graduate, but then also become a Lex 2 employee. So as much as we need these community leaders, as they are and as they become, not only in the community, back in our schools. And as we kind of bridge this gap and we make it even further, you know, we currently have these USC students that are coming in to mentor the high school students. The high school students are mentoring the elementary students. We're building a pipeline that kind of directs them right back into Lexington 2, and that's our goal.
And then with the growth of our L2 Full Circle, we would like to, in the future, if, if our data shows that this is driving what we want it to drive, we would develop an MOA similar to what New Bridge has with Dr. Tia Anderson and USC, to then have college students mentoring high school students on how to be mentors to elementary school students. And that brings us full circle. And then we are seeing the high school, and we are seeing the college. And now, all of this becomes, it's not so abstract. Graduation is not abstract, because my mentor's graduating, and I can see them in a cap and gown. My mentors go into college. I can see them at USC, or whatever college they choose. And so we're taking them to these places, letting them see it, and having teenagers who have more cred, tell them all about why school's important, graduation's important, inclusion is important, and college or career path is important. Now, we have a few pictures from just our recess time. We had a loose tooth. Some basketball. We're going to have to talk with him, because we don't climb up slides in elementary schools.
That's a high school, they're not elementary students.
Yes. And this young man here doesn't, doesn't play very much at recess. So this is my favorite picture. I love that she was in there and involved. And you can see, I don't know if you can see it on this, but pull it up on your screens when you have time. You can see, I mean, he's so into this. And it's so cool to have older kids there, working with them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I make a comment, too?
Sure.
Thank you all for making that presentation. I think it's a wonderful program. But I also want to give a shout out to both of our high schools today. Casey had their Unified Sports Day, and we had athletes from both high schools in their jerseys, in their uniforms. And they were working with the kids and helping the kids. And it was, it was a great thing to see. So thank you all for that. Ms. Branham?
Thank y'all for that presentation. It's great to see that excitement from our administrators. But I'd also like to point out that probably some of that passion that everyone saw in that presentation is because all three of those are Grow Our Own. They were Grow Our Own teachers and now administrators. And I'm so very proud of all of you, and now that you're trying to give back and have people follow in your footsteps. So thank you.
Ms. Castles?
Dr. Hefner, now I know why you don't want us to know everything before a meeting, because that was a surprise. I cannot, I'm so excited, love that enough. But I, I think maybe this was growing some last year, because I know a couple of kids that started going to some of these schools. And we think, wow, these younger kids are getting so much out of it. But sometimes you can talk to a child, and they will talk your ear off. And sometimes they are just so, the social skills and the things that they are learning from this, and the confidence, I just absolutely love this. And if this isn't And if this isn't family, and I just love it. So I'm so excited to see this little baby grow.
Thanks. Anyone else? All right.
We too are very excited about the opportunity here because we know that if we want strong high schools, it starts in first grade. It starts in kindergarten in those early grades. And certainly the opportunity to see those high school kids in action every day is going to be really nice for our students. The last piece I have tonight is a request for an approval from the board. As you know, each year we put together a course catalog, which we intend to bring likely to the October meeting for your approval. But prior to that, we have to assess what courses we have and don't have. And tonight we're, we're asking for your approval of two additional courses. The first is for a work-based learning internship course. In order for a student to get full credit for a work-based placement, it also has to be paired with a course. And so students can get some credit, but not the full piece. By us having this course in our course catalog, it allows the student to get additional credit and to allow them the opportunity to, to have an actual course on their transcript that will reflect that piece. It helps us with our calculation pieces, but it also helps the student ensure that they get their full credit. The second course that we're asking for your approval tonight, and I'm sorry, let me back up. That first course is of course is for our high schools and for our Innovation Center students to be able to complete their work-based learning. The second course comes from Northside Middle School. As you all know, they are an avid site. And as part of that, there is an additional component known as Avid Excel. Avid Excel primarily works with students who are limited English proficiency. This allows us an additional support program within the Avid framework to help students be more successful, to help them get those basic skills, but also to give them a whole nother layer of the Avid experience. And so in order for us to have full compliance with the Avid expectations, we have to first have an approved course from you to allow us to do that and add that to our course catalog for next year. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, Mr. Key?
Dr. McDonald, one thing that, yeah, we see career-ready on here. And I know we look at it different than my profession. Career-ready to me is a student, when he comes out of high school, ready to start a career. I know we focus a lot on them going to college, but I would like to see us start focusing a lot on how kids are supposed to present themselves when they get out of school. I was so excited, Middle State called me to interview 15 students from other high schools and the technical college to come in Construction Management. Of the 15, most of them, they'd come in and sit down. No eye contact. No, they didn't know how to do a resume. Didn't know how to sign their papers. And they were coming straight out of high school, looking for workforce work. But they were so unprepared on how to present themselves, how to sit there, how to talk to you, how to carry on the conversation, how to, how to even shake your hand. They could not do that. I think we're doing injustice to our kids if we're not teaching that for them to be career-ready when they come out of high school. I was so proud, both my boys went pre-studying college. And one of the classes they had to take before they graduated was how to do an interview, how to sit, how to sit straight up, how, how to keep eye contact on your interview. How to even, a lot of times they, they have meals with their boss. How to sit and properly eat. If we could teach some of that stuff, signatures, cursive, get, get the students ready for a real career. If we could tie that into some of these classes, I think we'd serve our students a whole lot better because a lot of our students aren't going to college and they're not being taught how to do that, how to present themselves in a professional manner. That's just one thing I'd like to look into.
Absolutely. This particular course, this work-based learning class actually does some of that. One of the final requirements of that class is that they can prepare a resume, that they have those skills to be able to go out and do those interviews because they're going to be in a workplace setting, getting their additional credit. So that, that does address part of that. Certainly, we, we know that those are the skills that need to be in many of our courses spread about.
I'll make a motion to approve the two courses requested by administration for innovation.
I have a motion by Ms. Branham, a second by Mr. Bray. Any discussion? Ms. Rucker?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So, you know, like Mr. Key was saying, I think all of those things are super important. And I did notice that this first course, there will be two evaluations. So maybe some of these things that he's talking about will be evaluated during that time. And then also, like you said, the end of course, it looks like there will be a resume that they'll have to create and, and have. So I think that's great. And then the Avid course, one of the things it says it focuses on is reading and writing and strengths and literacy skills. So I think that is going to be super beneficial for a lot of our kids. And then as far as the cursive, I know we're doing more of that because it's required, you know, by the state and we think that's a good idea. And I definitely do too. I wonder if we can maybe even our upper grade levels, even though it might seem silly to do it now, I think it might benefit some of the kids to have a little bit more, you know, of that time to, to just learn cursive because that's one thing that I think, you know, could be really good for all of our students. So just want to put that out there. And since, well, we're on instruction, can I just continue? You can tell me if I get off, get off topic. So we'll be talking about report cards soon. And one of the things I've asked for in the past is for the board to just get monthly updates on how we're doing, you know, with academic growth and achievement and attendance and things that are really important to our kids and our schools. So since you're new with Lexington II, I would just like to ask if you could kind of think about that and figure out a way maybe that we could get some updates each month so that maybe we're not as surprised when we get, get the report cards. I just wanted to mention that and see if you could look into that. And that is, yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rucker. Any other discussion? We good? Dr. McDonald, are you done or we got more?
I am finished, ready for you.
Okay, thank you so much. Oh, I didn't vote, I'm sorry, didn't vote it. I got ahead. All right, we have a motion and a second. And we've had discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you again. All right, and, and I'll have to agree, it is nice listening to everybody. I don't know what we used to call it back in the day. I can maybe ask Ms. Kessler that, you know, maybe it was like freshman 101 or something. Yeah, it's always nice, especially those of us that have children in their mid-20s and some of us that have them almost 40. It's nice that they know how to do their own signature, you know, because that is something that's a lost, it's lost now. So great, I'm glad that we're discussing that. All right, so Mr. Warren, you ready? We're going to go to operations.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Hafner, thank you for another opportunity to provide an update from the world of operations. Hard to believe that we are already over a month into the new school year. And this month, we wanted to provide you some information highlighting school safety and the work that goes into preparing our students and staff for emergency situations. A statement that I know I really lean into when it comes to school safety is that you don't rise to the level, you don't rise to the occasion, you rise to the level of your training. And that is why we prepare, that is why we practice. Schools are diligent in practicing fire drills, lockdown drills, reviewing our standard response protocol, which allows us to communicate a clear and consistent message and means of response. Safety of our students and staff is our top priority. And you will not find an individual more committed to maintaining safe and secure learning environments than our Director of Safety and Security, Santana Sanjuliano. This time I invite her up to provide a brief update on what we do and why we do it when it comes to school safety.
Good evening. Thank you for that introduction. It was nice. Madam Chair, Dr. Hafner, members of the board. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come give you an update in the world of security. It's a, it's a heavy topic to unpack. It's a hot topic right now. And also while I'm speaking, I want all of our parents to really listen to this too because I want you to understand what we do as a district to keep your students safe. So like I said, it's a hot topic. We've had a recent tragedy in Georgia with a school shooting. And that becomes a big, top topic of conversation amongst schools, amongst businesses, different things. How are we going to keep everybody safe? My goal when I took this position was to do everything in my power to prepare us to mitigate and to prevent crisis, but also when it comes knocking on our door, that we're prepared to respond to it properly. Because like I put up here, we don't choose tragedy and we don't know when tragedy is going to hit. We can choose how to respond, we can choose how to prepare for that. So the first thing I want to highlight is our partnerships with law enforcement, first responders. We're in six jurisdictions in Lexington II. That's a lot of jurisdictions, but that means we have a lot of good partners and a lot of good people that are going to help us if we have a crisis. Not only do we have law enforcement, we have fire EMS, any of our first responders, as well as emergency management for Lexington County. One of the things I want to highlight is over the summer, we did a joint training where we brought in our SROs and we also invited SROs throughout the state to come and do training with us. And we hosted a week-long training here at Lexington II. And we also invited our administrators and they can participate as a team. And how are we going to respond as a team if we have crisis? On the law enforcement end and on administrator end as well. We also want to make sure that they're all getting the same information at the same time. What does the school side look like? And what does the law enforcement side look like as well? We continue to do education together and the trends that are coming up, whether it's gang trends, weapons trends, different things that they see, we want everybody to be on the same page and have the same information. During our drills, we're currently in the midst of doing lockdown drills. Parents, we send out communication that we're doing those. And when we have done those, give some speaking points about that. When we do our drills, we also have our law enforcement partners participate. So they come in, they open the door and they talk to the kids. And they say, hey, guys, great job. I didn't hear you, couldn't see you. And that gives the kids a chance to see the children as well, excuse me, the children a chance to see the law enforcement officer as well and understand they're here to help us. There also, we have a lot of law enforcement officers and firefighters. They'll come and walk through our buildings, they'll come for First Responder Day. Some of our schools will host them for lunches. So that gives them a chance to kind of be in front of the kids and see all the different things that law enforcement and first responders can do. And then of course, our responses. Our law enforcement partners and our emergency responders are very quick to be there for us. If we need anything, if we need information, if we need a response, they are right there. We work side by side. The other thing we follow, I talk about all the time, is I love you guys standard response protocol. All right, this is, we use this during a crisis, we use this during drills. This is how we respond. And see all those pretty little pictures? Our kids understand that as well. It's very clear, common lexicon that our kids understand, our employees understand. A substitute teacher can come in and look at the piece of paper and know what to do when there's an emergency. It's very, very easy to get it. So each action is followed by a directive. So for an example, hold in your classroom. That's what the kids will hear. Hold in your classroom. And they learn, what does that mean? That means we want to keep the halls clear. It could be anything from a snake got in the hallway, we want to get the snake out. All right? A spill in the hallway, a medical emergency in the hallway. We just don't want kids walking through it. The other thing we utilize is Raptor Alert. So there's a lot of emphasis right now on what are we doing for silent panic? What are we doing for letting people know? How do we alert when something happens? We use Raptor Alert. And as you can see, it uses the I love you guys standard response protocol. So you can choose lockdown, hold, secure, evacuate, whatever it may be. And any teacher can initiate that if we have a response, an incident inside of the school. They also offer on this is what's called Team Assist. So if we have a smaller incident inside a classroom, a teacher can ask for help. Maybe it's just, I need an admin to the classroom. I have a medical issue in the classroom. We don't want to alert the entire school of what's going on. We need help pretty quickly inside the building. With Raptor Alert, it also populates accountability for the teachers. They can take their, their attendance while they're in the middle of that emergency. So if they send a kid to the library and we go into lockdown, we know that child is not in the, in the classroom, they're in the library. We can keep that accountability. And if we move to a reunification where parents have to come pick that child up somewhere else, we know exactly who that child is with because they're keeping that accountability as they go. And we do training with staff with this throughout the school year on Raptor Alert and the I love you guys protocol. The other thing we offer, this is new this year, is called LineWise. So LineWise gives us real-time alerts on our district devices. So if we have a student that mentions something kind of concerning, maybe it's self-harm, they're looking up something that's inappropriate, they may talk about violence on their district device, we are alerted and we can respond quickly with that. Whether it's with an admin phone call, whether it's with social workers getting involved, whatever that is, we can respond quickly and before we have an emergency, come to the building. There's me, I work with Jan Scarborough, the District Family Services Coordinator. And there's many times that we're up and we're talking with parents in the middle of the night and we don't mind because that's what, that's what our jobs do, is to help our parents too. The last thing I want to talk about is BTAM, which is the Behavioral Threat Assessment and Management. So this was brought through South Carolina Safe Schools that they came out with the BTAM that's going to be required in all of our schools. What is it? There's a very big word salad up there of what it is. But in, in plain speak, BTAM is you may have a child that has concerning behavior or a child that makes a concerning comment. How are we going to respond to that? In the past, a lot of times, things are just discipline, discipline, discipline. But typically, when children are saying things like that, something else is going on. So what are we doing? We're learning, we're learning our students, paying attention, building those relationships with those kids. So when we see concerning behavior, we can respond to that. And what does that look like? We're trying to distinguish between a student making a threat and posing a threat. So if I said to you right now, we could stop something bad from happening in our schools, would you be on board with that? Most people would say yes. The National Threat Assessment Center, which is run by the Secret Service and the FBI, found that on average, in, in the event of a school crisis and a school shooting, that the shooter showed four to five concerning behaviors prior to that. And that it was mostly noticed by their teachers and their peers. So if you ever watch a news, a news event after a bit, a large event like that, you hear people say, I remember when, or I thought, or he said, she said. Those are things we need to pay attention to. So if we can get a little friend, young, that is having some concerning behaviors or maybe they're isolated, they feel like they're being bullied. If we can intervene them then and show them, there's another way. We can bring some resources, supports in. We can work with their families with some things. We could take them off any kind of pathway to violence. Okay? The other thing that I want to highlight is with this, we're really building the Lex II tip line within our schools. We want kids to feel comfortable reporting if they see concerning behavior, if they hear something. Right now Snapchat and TikTok are, are hot commodities with different threats and things that are coming through on there. So we want kids to feel like they have a proper place that they can report that, whether it's to the tip line or to an adult in the building that they feel comfortable with. So the Lex II tip line, the number is 803-363-5172. It's a text or a phone call. And the email address is lex2tipline@lex2.org. So I really, really would like any parent that's listening right now, let their children know that this tip line does exist and it is a great avenue if they don't feel comfortable walking up to somebody and reporting anything. So our work is never done. I promise I will do everything in my, in my power. As long as I'm here, I will advocate for every kid that walks through our building. So if y'all have any questions, I'll be glad to entertain that at this time.
Any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know my directors are out there wondering who's next. You've heard from Mr. McPherson and now you've heard from Ms. Sanjuliano. So I guess we'll find out soon, my guys right there. But thank you, that's my, that's my update for today.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, next we are going to move on to new business. And the first item is certification of delegates for the South Carolina School Board Association's 2024 Delegate Assembly. According to the South Carolina School Board Association Constitution, the Delegate Assembly is the policymaking body of the association and is composed of certified voting delegates from active member boards. The number of votes allocated to each board is based on pupils and each board is based on pupils enrollment in public elementary and secondary schools as per the ADM for the State Department of Education. Ms. Kessler, I know that you are just devastated that you won't be able to go this year. I mean, we might see if maybe you could just catch a ride, just. So with that being said, I'll entertain a motion on who we are going to send as our delegate this year.
All right. I move to nominate Kevin Key to be our delegate for the 2024 SESBA Delegate Assembly and hold our three votes.
I have a motion, I had, by Ms. Rucker, a second by Mr. Bray. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Chair, I will say, it's very important that that person reads all of the material because there's a lot of things that you represent, this district that you're voting on. And sometimes it gets a little touchy. So when you get the material, it's a pretty heavy packet. I would advise reading through it.
Yes, ma'am. All right. All right. Mr. Key, you have your marching orders?
I have them. I was there last year and I read through that packet. Pretty in depth.
Should have gone to you earlier.
Yeah, yes. All right. If no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Next item is consideration of granting easements to the city of Casey. And I'll turn that over to Dr. Hafner.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I will also ask Mr. Warren to assist as he has met with AEC over at BC to discuss the extent of the project, the length and amount of time that it's supposed to take place and all those things. Mr. Warren?
Yes, ma'am.
That'd be great.
The city of Casey is requesting three utility easements from Lexington, too, as part of the Avenue's Drainage Improvement Project. The city was awarded $10 million in grant funding to complete this project, which will benefit the city and provide the school district benefit as well. The underground system located in the city is currently between 50 and 75 years old. This work will improve drainage as well as improve water quality in Casey. We have worked closely, like Dr. Hafner said, with American Engineering in preparation for this request, also coordinated with Dr. Jones at Brooklyn Casey, just making sure there wouldn't be any impacts operationally for him and his functioning and, and that there will not be. The work within the, within easements two and three will occur this summer. And the work within easement three will occur at a later date. I'll provide that information as, you know, as it comes available. Do not foresee any, any substantial impact, as I noted, but happy to answer any questions and provide any further information required.
All right. Mr. Bray?
Madam Chair, I move to grant Casey the three aforementioned easements, for utility easements.
All right. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Key. Is there any discussion?
Did I hear you correctly to say that nothing goes under any structure?
The easement, easement three
Yes.
is a parking lot. So that there will be some, some area will be blocked off as they work on that. But as far as going under a structure, no, ma'am, just parking lot.
Okay. Not to be too negative, but the last time we granted, well, one time we got granted easement was at the old district office on Ninth Street. They went down the middle and they did not put things back as it was. So.
Yes, we, we met on site with the engineer and with Dr. Jones and, of course, talked about logistics and planning.
We did then as well.
And, and they understand kind of the expectations that we have, that, you know, we're granting this easement and, and it will be put back as you see it. And, and obviously better because it'll be new, you know, new pavement and new, new striping and all once they're finished.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bray?
Madam Chair, the one question I had was, number three takes up probably 50% of that Indigo parking lot. It was, it's not too old. Are they going to just repave the easement that's what, seven, 40, 50 feet wide, but probably going to be 60 feet wide? Are they going to repave that whole thing?
Yeah, they'll repave that, but they'll, they'll phase it in. They'll find some good clean breaks where it looks, you know, looks as seamless as they can make it. But yeah, we actually discussed that and he assured us of, of just that.
Ms. Bray?
Just one question. When, when was this request brought to our school district?
Well, we've been talking about this for a while, but they just recently received the final approval from DOT. So once they received that, that's when we brought this forward. But we, we've met several times, you know, over the late summer or the fall. But formally, we were able to make this request just in the last couple of weeks.
Any other discussion? All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Next item is consideration of first reading of proposed revisions of board policy IJL Library Materials Selection and Adoption. And I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Bray?
I move that we adopt policy IJL Library Materials Selection and Adoption.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Key. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
It says in here that the administration and, or assigned persons will look over the existing materials that are in the libraries. I just want confirmation that all materials have been viewed and approved or removed as of August of '24.
We still have, excuse me. Yes, ma'am. We still have some that are decataloged that are in review, but they're not in the school.
Okay. And are the catalogs up to date?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Bray?
Madam Chair, I move to amend the motion that in the second paragraph, sorry, the third paragraph, it reads, the board delegates, I'll see, can y'all scroll up to the very top, it'd be the third paragraph in green, right there. The board delegates to the superintendent or his or her designated task of reviewing potential new instructional materials. So with that verbiage of reviewing, there's never approval of any purchase of materials. I make the, I move that we change reviewing to approving in that first line.
Okay.
Because it can still be delegated, it's just somebody approving it.
The principal has to sign the purchase orders for those materials.
And isn't this basically the model policy we were given by the states? I wouldn't personally feel comfortable making any amendments to model policy that State Department has given us at this time. Now, maybe once this gets into play, the board can bring it back up and do whatever. But if they've given us what the State Department says we need to do, I personally, as a board member, would not feel comfortable making any changes to that at this time.
Okay. So at this time, we have a motion and a second. And then we have an amended motion. Is there a second? All right. The amended motion fails. And now we will go back to the original motion. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair. Dr. Hafner, without changing that model policy, who is officially approving a purchase of any new instructional material right now?
First, that would go through the school principal. And then the purchase orders come to the district to be processed.
So on the kind of operational side, it's the school principal. On the financial side, it goes through just any financial. But presumably, the financial side, you're not reviewing, the, not reviewing the items that it lays out in the definitions of this policy, more of just that, that's a correct instructional material purchase.
Right. And if you're talking about textbook adoptions and things like that, that's totally, totally different. And those are put out there for review before we pick those books.
Thank you.
Ms. Rucker?
Thank you. And Dr. Hafner, I just wanted to mention that some, maybe some of the recently added material, you might want to look into that and just make sure all the new, the recently newly added material follows the reg.
That's why I asked the original questions. Have it been, has it been reviewed? And she said yes.
So if you can give me some specifics, I'll double check.
I can. Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Now we'll move on to item D, information for board. And it is proposed revision to administrative rule AR-BG, BGD-R, Board Policy Process Board Review of Administrative Rules. And I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion that we, I'll make a motion that the board approve. Even though this is informational, I think it's important that the board takes ownership over this administrative rule. So I think it's important to make the motion to go ahead and take first and second reading and approve this administrative rule.
All right. I have a motion.
Second.
And second by Ms. Kessler. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, I have concern with the verbiage as soon as possible. If you scroll back up to the top, to the green writing, as soon as possible is highly vague. And I think if we're going to open the can of kind of what could be seen as decreasing transparency by not having a second reading that affords everyone out here 30 days to look at it, then we should probably put some type of hurdle on as soon as possible from, be it two days, seven days, something like that, so that we're not dumping something into board docs 30 minutes before a meeting, having a second reading, and the general population never getting a chance to really review it or even to schedule to come and speak on it.
Can I speak to that? I think it's important because we needed to clarify this administrative rule because doing first and second reading on some things is something we've had to do a lot, particularly at the beginning of a school year, when administration has recognized a policy or changed that needs to take place before the children come back in the building. And so again, the proposed language, I think, is helpful because that's the first time we've ever said, hey, it, it needs to get loaded as soon as, as practical as you know about it. To me, you can hold your administration as a board to the fire on that, so to speak, because if Dr. Hafner, for instance, brings you something that she knew about three weeks earlier, but she didn't post it for, you know, until 30 minutes before, yes, that, that would be an issue. But there may be issues. I don't know that we've ever had something with a 30-minute notice because our board has to be noticed by
Two days?
Two or three days beforehand. So I would just say, I would be hesitant to put a time limit on that because the purpose of that administrative rule is to be used only in really necessary purposes and not just as a matter of course. And I think that's why it's good it's set aside. But if you then take it and start chopping it up to say it better be loaded up, blah, 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 then I think you may end up undoing the purpose and the good of it. If it begins becoming abused, I think you've got plenty of people in the public who are willing to speak to that and let the board know that they're not happy about that. And then future boards, you know, can, can ask their chairman and their superintendent not to throw surprises like that on them. So that's why I will be hesitant to do a hard line, two days, whatever. Because you might, you, that rule is there in case of basically an emergency or an urgent situation.
And perhaps that should be the key word instead of under special circumstances, maybe emergency circumstances would be, would define it better.
Madam Chair, if I may, the other, the other concern I have is, what's the definition of a special or emergency circumstances? I, it just feels very open for abuse. And if there was a, if we had further defined in this policy, special circumstances equal blah, 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 I would be more than happy to go for it. But without saying, hey, if we don't get this first and second reading done because now we won't get a revenue or we won't have an accounts payable pushed back out, those make a lot of sense. But without any description to that, I, I'm not comfortable with it.
How about this? I will, in my motion, say under special circumstances clearly defined within the board's motion. So in that way, whenever the board makes the motion for first and second reading, the board needs to clearly define why we called this a special circumstance. I think that's
That would be clarity.
I'm, I'm good with that.
That would be clarity.
So would everybody accept my making the motion to approve this with that? I just, under special circumstances, clearly defined by the board's motion.
Ms. Rucker?
I just want to make sure that when we have first and second reading in one meeting, that the public has at least had a chance to review it and that we have public participation at that meeting. Just because I feel like anytime we have a policy that is going to be going through first and second reading, that the public at least needs to see it and at least have an opportunity to speak to it. But I do know, you know, that, you know, there might be some true emergencies that come up. But those would be extremely rare. And if we had a true emergency, you know, you could maybe temporarily freeze the policy and explain what happened.
So only first and second reading at board meetings, not workshops?
Well, it could, it could, wherever you have public, as long as you provide public participation.
Participation.
Yeah. At least post it, at least have public participation.
And the good, the good part about that is the future boards could also let the superintendent know because if the board is getting the agenda the Friday before it's released, then the board would have that expectation that if we're about to vote on something, that it should be published nearly the same time that the board got it. So I think you've got an internal mechanism that this helps that with for transparency.
I think some of my concern there is though that, like, when did the stuff get released for this meeting? I, I don't, I forget to sign in sometimes and so then I won't see it. I feel like it was.
It went to you all last Friday.
No, to the public.
To the public.
It hadn't been posted.
So.
Posted the agenda.
That's kind of my concern. An agenda doesn't do you any good if we're going to be discussing a policy and having a first and second reading because none of these people get a chance to read it. And that's why I feel, I mean, I, I would love seven days, but I get your point, seven days. I don't fully get it because we're taking 30 days. So 30 down to seven is still a huge help. But I, I think it's got to be at least 24 hours or 48 hours that these wonderful folks get a chance to have some type of way to read it, digest it, and then either come yell at me or somebody else here and tell us why we should or shouldn't do it. I ju, I think, I, I can't vote on it the way it is currently.
Yeah. In those situations, couldn't it get, couldn't it, could it not be released 48 hours prior? Just that part of the agenda?
Well, that's, I think this is saying that part of the agenda will be released. Because some things they're holding to release, like for instance, that wonderful presentation that we just had a while ago isn't up yet, but it'll, everything will be up tomorrow. So I think this is actually saying, if you're going to do this, then you better post it. Whereas other things might not get posted. So I think the intent of this is to help transparency because we're saying, hey, if you're going to do this, you better post it. There's no excuse not to. So as soon as you know about it, as soon as practicable, I think that's a discretion.
I think it's two days. I think it's 48 hours.
So maybe we could
Madam, go ahead.
Yep. So maybe we could do the, the wording to be, after public review, we could say at a minimum 48 hours prior to the scheduled meeting.
Madam Chair.
I just caution y'all on putting a time on it because I just know when we've had things that have popped up, and it's nothing about not being transparent, but it's something that they find out, they got to get done. And it has to be done by a certain time. I mean, you know, however, however the board, well, the board is to vote on it. But I just really caution other than, because to me, as soon as practical is definable, when the board finds out about it. Because then the public should know about it.
So it'll be posted.
It'll be posted.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. As soon as
But our agenda is not even posted to the, I checked earlier. And I've mentioned, please post anything under unfinished business, new business before a meeting and the financial report. And it's, I've asked multiple times and it was not, it still wasn't posted for this meeting. So I just am concerned if we have, you know, a meeting where we're going to do first and second reading, we could, I mean, surely we could post it the day before and have public participation. I just think that's a minimum of, and if we have a true emergency, then we just, you know, have a meeting and explain, you know, clearly explain why we're having an emergency meeting. But I think that would just be under very extreme circumstances that we would do that. But I do.
Dr. Hafner, is that workable?
Yes, I think once you all receive the agenda, if you see something that you believe is necessary to do a first and second, or I've asked for a first and second.
48-hour notice.
We could post that policy 48 hours ahead of time.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I move to amend the motion to add the verbiage after, as soon as practical, prior to the meeting, to add the verbiage, but no sooner than 48 hours.
No.
But then later?
No later.
No sooner than 48 hours, right? So zero would be right before the meeting. And as you go backwards, it would be 24 and then 48, right? So anything sooner than 48 hours? Or later? We're, we've got, we've got some wonderful esquires. Y'all's, this is y'all's world. What would be the correct amendment to say?
Which is another reason I don't think we should put a specific Which is another reason I don't think we should put a specific time limit on it, because I think you just need to be careful with that, but...
Yeah, I've heard it said about...
If you want to have, you can post it 48 hours prior to the meeting, is that...
Correct.
I would use language to be, that the... The proposed policy would be available to the public review as soon as practical, practical, prior to the meeting, but no later than...
48 hours prior to the meeting. So, if you use the word "prior," then it's later, if not as sooner. Okay, Madam Chair, correct my... Do you, do you want to redo the amendment?
How about with efforts made to make sure it incurs before 48 hours prior to the meeting, because at the end of the day, the reason this language is getting added is when you get in an urgent situation.
If we ever get in an urgent situation, we can always suspend the rules, though. So, that's...
True.
So, there's already a mechanism there, so if we're just going to make an easy runway for a new mechanism, we've got to have some throttle to it. So, do you want me to remake my amendment to Will's verbiage, or is everybody here okay with that being the amendment? You tell me, Madam Chair.
Yeah, as long as you got sooner or later correct, because I'm confused with the way you were...
Madam Chair, I'll reword my amendment to move the emotion to say, to add the verbiage "after," "as practical," "prior to the meeting, but no later than 48 hours prior." Done, period.
Yeah. And I would have to say, I'm gonna, and I totally agree, you know, but I almost think we need a little cushion somewhere on there like that, if possible, if possible, because, I mean, what if it doesn't, if we can't get it up till 24 hours before, if possible, before the meeting? I agree it needs to be dropped before the meeting, absolutely. I'm just, I'm worried about us tying it in, but you said we can always amend it.
We can also always call a special meeting.
Yeah.
So, there's no...
You can change your meeting from Thursday to Tuesday.
Absolutely, it's way too easy.
Okay, so we have a motion.
Go with Will's terminology.
Yes, so my motion is, as I just last stated, and it's sitting there.
All right, do we have a second?
So, is the amending my motion, is that what you're doing?
Yes.
So, what now is the amendment, because I'd rather vote on the amendment separate.
We'll read it while we get...
So, well, this is a motion to amend my motion.
Yes, I'm...
Yes, the, we have the main motion that's been, we currently have pending toward the body, a motion to amend...
With, give, but would you repeat your verbiage again? That's what we're doing, yeah. I know I got an amendment on it.
All right. The amended motion would be to add the words, but no later than 48 hours, between, as soon as practical, prior to the meeting.
Okay, we, now we have an amended motion to the motion. Is there a second on the amended motion?
Second.
All right, there is a second by Ms. Rucker. Any further discussion?
I do, because now I'm confused a little bit, because 48 hours, or what was the, what did you say, because there's no point in putting 48 hours if we're saying we, we might not do it.
Since the amendment's goal is to say, "as soon as possible, but no later than 48 hours prior."
That's what I'm saying, great.
That is the amendment.
Okay.
So, if we're going to suspend first and second reading, then the district must post it to the public as soon as possible, which would be up to 35, six days, but no earlier or later than 48 hours prior. Double negative stuff on my head.
Got it, thank you.
You're very confused now?
Got it, let's go.
Okay, so, we have an amended motion with a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right.
So, there's still a vote, there's still a motion on the table.
No, the amended motion...
We just voted on the amendment.
But that preceded the motion, so the motion carries.
The amendment.
The amendment carries.
So, now you need to vote on the motion as, my motion as amended. We need to take one more vote on my motion as amended.
Right.
We will now go back, we're all totally confused, and vote on the...
Mr. Bray, I'm in agreement on something.
On the original motion with the amended verbiage. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right.
With first and second reading. Without 48 hours notice.
Okay, thanks for bearing with us, okay. Next, we will move on to the next item, which is item E. It's consideration of first reading of proposed revision to board policy FF naming facilities. This was brought to us a while back by some, we had some community members speak during, I believe, one was a workshop, maybe, and at public participation, about the possibility of changing the verbiage in policy FF to where it could be named after certain rooms, facilities, halls, et cetera, could be named after certain people that mean the world to us in this district. So, at this time, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the first reading of the proposed revisions to board policy FF.
I have a, I have a motion by Mr. Bray, a second by Mr. Key. Is there any discussion?
I have several questions. I don't know why we're changing it, because it's been in there since we did it several months ago. I don't understand why you're changing the policy, it basically...
It hasn't changed. My inquiry into this, it had nothing to do about the policy for naming facilities, which I explained to Ms. Wooton earlier this week. It has to do with what are we going to do with the facilities that, for naming or honoring our Earl Davis, Claudette Taylor, George I. Payer, Hayward Moore Center, facilities that we have demolished in the last 10 years, and how are we going to acknowledge those schools in this district? Are we going to name other facilities after that? It has nothing to do with new things, it has clarification for these things. Teal Room, we vacated District Office, acknowledgement of Pine View Elementary, which was demolished, but it wasn't named after anyone's, but you still have people that worked there for years and administration that were there for Pine View Elementary School in our district. So, I don't understand what you're doing, changing the policy now, you just did it several months ago.
Well, I think there was some question, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, there was some question about, and we had requests, was that the person did not have to be deceased.
Well, I suggested that to you early this week, with my question I asked on October the 24th, 2023, when we were approving the policy originally. I don't understand why you would wait until someone's deceased for three years to honor, to do something to honor that person. It would be nice for that person to realize that their energy and their work in the district was recognized and let them see it, but I suggested that in 2023.
And we've had some other questions about that and calls about that, and so that is why it is back on the agenda, to see if we can, at this point, get a motion to change it, that it does not say deceased, but it does not have to be, can be living. Ms. Branham.
So, I think that the proposed change does clarify a little bit, and it helps, I think, with what Ms. Kessler and I want to make sure this administration does, and this board does within the next year, hopefully, or sooner. I like the fact of being more specific about a specific area or feature on whatever campus, because I think, I think it cleans up that you could have a room or a hall of memories or whatever you want to call it, but I think what Ms. Kessler and I are feeling very, very passionate about, as well as the rest of you, so I'm not discounting, y'all don't, y'all feel the same passion, but this, we're about at the end of our road here, and we have been responsible for building projects that took away things that were named for people who were very important to our school district, and people whose families still live here, and just people who legacies should be honored, and so we want to make sure that particularly some of the schools, and I think you can take this all the way back to, I wouldn't say just stop on this building plan, take this back to the original, you know, we had KC1, KC2, KC3, there's some original school buildings that a lot of people went to school, Lakeview, all of these things that we have named for other people, or schools that people attended within our schools, so that people who went here and graduated from here, regardless of if their school is still named the same or still standing, that they have a hall or a wall or a room or something that they can walk in and say, hey, that's a cool picture of 50 years at Pine View, because I think we all got that picture, and that's where I went, and I was a kid in that picture on that playground. And so, particularly for us, all those are important, but we feel really strongly about the Teal Room, Earl Davis Elementary, Claudette Taylor, George I. Payer, and the Hayward Moore Fine Arts Center, which, by the way, was, we did fine arts tonight, and also the acknowledgement, like we said, of Pine View Elementary, because, you know, that was a very important school to a lot of teachers and community and kids and family members. So, particularly, that's our primary concern, is for the district to come up with a plan that you present to the board, and obviously to the public, because we can come and speak to that if we want to.
You can.
Yeah, we can, we're going to love to sign up for public participation in a couple of months, but anyway, and we can come, like, speak to that maybe if we wanted to, or we could just call y'all up and scream and holler, but either way, that's what's important to us about the policy, and I think that by switching those words around, perhaps, y'all might be able to just name a Hall of Fame, or not a Hall of Fame, but like a Hall of Memories, or whatever you want to call it. We just have a rich heritage.
We don't want to lose it.
It's great to have fancy, it's great to have new, but there's 70, 80, 90-year-old people sitting in their home, watching TV right now, remembering the days where they went to the original KC Elementary School, and I don't know where they can go to see that memory anymore. Their high schools are still standing, but their elementary schools, you know, probably are some of, and middle schools might be some of their finer memories and years, so that's, I guess, you know, what I'm getting at.
On to...
Madam Chair. Yep, and, yeah, I didn't realize till, you know, didn't think about the Teal Room, I mean, but that is, all of these things that, you know, where we've done something different or moved to a new building, we don't want to forget those things, so I think the way the policy's written would cover us being able to come up with some really neat ways to remember, remember those.
Madam Chair, I am not a self-professed English person, I was a math guy. I've read the green writing, and then I've read it how it was. Somebody explain to me what the change is.
Again, the change was, we had a request from several board members about changing from deceased, did not have to...
It's still there, though.
But still there.
But add, not just deceased, it says it has to have been deceased, it doesn't say anything about it can be living, but to make everything a little bit easier, if there's no objection, I'm going to table this, and the future board can discuss it at the board workshop in January, if there's no objection.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
What if we do next month?
Okay.
Because we'll still have one more meeting together, and we, you know, because there's a lot of history here, and, you know, I think that, you know, that would help us put together the plan around this and the idea around it.
And we're just asking that it be recognized, and that the upcoming board and this administration start making that plan, so, you know, there's about 30 days that people can start tossing some ideas around and stuff like that. That's, that's our primary thing here, so I would just ask that we go ahead and do the first reading, because you can always table it for second reading or anything else between now and October, so I'd ask that we go ahead and just take first reading with it, the proposed change. We can make changes between now and the second reading for anything anybody came up with, but I'd ask that we do take first reading tonight, so that we might can take second reading at our last meeting.
I'm not against it, but I still don't see what the difference is.
Because I think specifically, it's on any, on any district property, on any district property, it's not just a school.
Read the struct language, though, to name a portion of a building, a single building on campus with multiple buildings or a specific area on the campus.
Campus, not, or is this building we're kind of talking about, or any district property?
So, with this change, what can I do different? Because I don't see where I can do anything different.
On any district property, it's not just like a campus of a school.
Hayward Moore.
Okay, I'm good with going for it, I just, again, I'll stick to math.
Well, again, what it says on there, "has been deceased for at least three years," and that's why I wanted to go ahead and get the first reading, and then we can discuss that, and that can be changed at the second reading. So, at this time, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion for first reading.
The motion's...
Is it on the floor?
Yeah, it's on, it's out there.
She, Ms. Kessler, what, made it, I believe? And either I seconded it, or Mr. Bray seconded it?
I think I seconded it, doesn't matter.
All right, is there any more discussion?
Mr. Bray made the motion?
Bray made the motion, and Key seconded the motion.
Short-term memories, not my thing either.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, next item is consideration of seven out-of-state overnight student travel requests, and we have also G, which is consideration of travel requests, so I'm thinking we can combine the two, and instead of both of them being read twice, I'll let whoever's making the motion take it from there. Ms. Branham.
I'll make this one quick and easy. I make a motion that we combine F and G and approve all of the requests for travel with students and administrators.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Branham, a second by Mr. Bray. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, our next is announcements. September 25th is our early release day, October 1st is a special call board meeting at the District Education Center at 5:30, October 10th is the end of the first nine weeks, October 11th is in-service day, October 14th is e-learning weather makeup day, October 16th is report cards issued, October 17th is Board of Trustees reception honoring our outgoing board members in the PACS lobby at 5:00 p.m., October 17th is the regular monthly board meeting at the District Education Center at 6:00 p.m., November 5th is Election Day holiday, November 12th is special call board meeting at the District Education Center at 5:30, November 21st is employee recognition service rec, reception at the PAC lobby at 5:15, November 21st is the regular monthly board meeting at the District Education Center at 6:00 p.m. And with that being said, I'll now entertain a mo, motion to enter into executive session.
Madam Chair, before we do that, I move to change on the announcements, October 14th, from e-learning day to a in-person learning day. I get that it was a weather day that we skipped, but I am staunchly opposed, the data shows that anytime we can have our kids in a classroom, it is significantly better than them e-learning, especially at the younger ages, and I can just foresee October 14th being an absolutely beautiful day, and then everybody sitting at home doing 45 minutes of Chromebook time and calling it a day, and I, that's my motion.
I can't take a motion on an announcement.
It's a good statement.
Okay, I'll leave it as a statement, and I hope that we see a change between now and our next meeting, which is October 1st.
The plan is for e-learning day.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
I appreciate it moving forward. I hear your concern.
Okay. All right. I will now entertain a motion for executive session.
I make a motion that the Board of Trustees enter closed session for legal advice upon property matters. Legal advice regarding board policy KBE and board policy LEC and consideration of personnel appointments and resignations.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We are now in executive session.
I make a motion that the meeting be reconvened in open session and appropriate affidavit be executed.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We are now in open session. I'll entertain for actions on executive session.
I make a motion to approve administration's recommendation of appointments and resignations.
Second. I have a motion by Ms. Castles, a second by Ms. Rucker. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I make a motion to accept administration's recommendation for report of breach to South Carolina Department of Education for person number two.
Second. I have a motion by Ms. Castles, a second by Ms. Rucker. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I'm sorry. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn by Mr. Bray.
Second.
Second by Ms. K-